The finger is crooked and swollen, so I'm trying to put a splint on it and see what happens.
Are they gonna have to re-break it, Rob?
I hope not. That wouldn't be.
Was it crooked before it re-broke?
No. I don't even know that I broke it. It just, you know.
Joint, the middle joint?
Yeah.
You think you dislocated it?
It could have been. I haven't been to a doctor to get it x-rayed or anything.
Well, let's see, you've got about nine other people that'll be happy to help you be a doctor here, so hold your finger up, we'll give you a diagnosis.
There we go.
Okay, all right, well, hope it's nothing serious.
It's not.
Okay, so it looks like it is 1:03 and we are here for a special meeting workshop continuation of the mayor and city council to talk about our strategic long-term goals, long and short-term goals. But before I begin, or before we begin the meeting, there's a brief statement that has been, I think, shared with the remembrance of council, and I'd just like to read it into the record, and that is a statement regarding what happened two days ago at the Capitol, almost exactly at this time, and that is that we are all horrified to see a lawless mob attack the Capitol building. We mourn the loss of a Capitol police officer's life in this senseless silence. And while we can never forget or condone the actions of those who inspired or perpetrated this un-American industrial act, we can join together in working for a better country. That is a responsibility of every American. And I think that summarizes pretty much, I believe, how all of us feel. This was a very unfortunate and unnecessary and illegal activity that occurred, and it really is quite a mark on our country.
Yeah, I will say, apparently the FBI has gone on Twitter and other media, I'm sure, because obviously this whole thing was filmed.
Mountain thousands of times.
Yeah, but, so, I mean, I'm very hopeful that no one from this area was there, but it is interesting that they've gotten something like 4,000 tips already.
Yes.
Putting out photographs of the various people. I mean, you know, like that guy who stole the lectern, you know, he's like, hi.
Right.
I think they'll figure out.
Let's take a selfie as I commit felonies.
Well, I mean, they have shown some more internal office shots of stuff, of offices that were disrupted and files.
People were posting on their social media accounts, so you have, like, people tweeting @FBI. You might want to check into the... I mean, I'm telling you, there's gonna be, I think there will be consequences.
Oh, I think there will be.
Well, it's been very heartening that the current US attorneys in this Justice Department have, a number of them have come forward and said the right things.
Right.
You know, we'll see what happens, but they've said the right things.
Right. Okay, so, I think, you know, we haven't heard the end of this, and nor will we hear the end of it for a long time. Certainly a day I never expected to see, I don't think any of us did. But it is, I think we should move on with the discussion. We got quite far when we got together back in December. However, there were still a lot of pieces that were missing and some topics that we never got to. I would remind us that while we're starting at 1 o'clock, at 4:30, I think all of us are probably going to want to be off of this and attend the BB Town Hall meeting, so I think we need to keep, you know, some timeframe here. So, Emery, would you like to talk to us a little bit about where we are? And I know you provided additional information, and thank you for annotating this matrix with more information. It's more helpful, it is helpful to see what we've done and where we are and what's in works, so thank you.
All right, so first, I guess, let me go through the materials I sent out prior to the meeting. I did draft minutes. I do have, there's a place where I need to enter a number that Ellen Lorraine has provided me. So, and, you know, I can put these on, and, well, and it says Janine, so I'll change that as well. So, I will, I can put these on Monday's list of minutes for you guys to approve, but really I wanted to include them just so that we have them as a reference. So, where we were, we were just kind of, I think, finishing up on the issue of workforce, which is, I guess, still on the first page, wow. Still on the first page of the priorities. So, we had finished that. The other two handouts, we've got the the update, the status as of December 2020 for the matrix of priorities that were developed in 2019, and then the updated list of things submitted on the questionnaire based on whether it was staff or or council. So, I think we did make it through the discussion of workforce, so that the next group of, grouping of items is budget and finance. Oh, let me bring Robin into the room as well. So, we've got a number of bullets there, and I think we also have some long-term, from a long-term perspective, stability of budget and diversifying economy were brought up, and then fiscal planning. And then, under budget and finance for short-term, assess strategies for increasing revenue from existing programs and where we're losing revenue from existing programs. The budget process, I'm not sure if that means getting through this existing budget process, or or just in general improving the budget process.
Emery, I'm having a little trouble matching what you're describing as the links with what I see. Didn't you say that 2019 priorities had been updated to December 2020?
Well, I had, there's a column for December 2020.
Okay.
On the table. That was all sent out to you on the 30th.
Correct. Which not what's linked to, then?
Oh, you know what? I meant to update the links and I did not. I apologize.
Okay. Now I got it.
I'm sorry about that. We can update those links. Budget process, economic sustainability and adaptability. I think this year has definitely underscored the need for that. Economic viability of the city. And stop the litigation, build bridges instead of, build bridges of understanding and cooperation instead of pursuing legal entanglements. Now, I put that under budget and finance mainly because of litigation costs, but I think that's certainly a bigger, bigger issue.
It falls under intergovernmental relationships and lots of bridges over to lots of other things, so.
Right. So, you know, so I don't know kind of where you want to go. You can see, based on the handout, that the first bullet was brought forward by staff, the rest were brought up by members of council, so.
Right.
I don't know what your thoughts are on these issues.
Well, it seems to be that we could talk about strategies for increasing revenue from existing programs as well as, and see where that goes, but I think maybe the overarching topic is the economic viability of the city. You know, in terms of, we know there are several things happening here. Our downtown has remained strong, although it certainly had a tremendous kick in the teeth, if you will, with the COVID, and that, and certainly our beach activities remain strong. We know that BB is still a very, very important part of our economic community. However, their BB's operations here are going to change. They're, with all the constructions they're doing of satellite facilities, that could have an impact on the economic viability of the community. And certainly, the development that's going on around us, both commercially and residentially, is going to have an impact on our viability. I would open it up for a discussion to, over the all of you, as to what your thoughts are about the things I just mentioned.
I think I've discussed with some of you the idea that I think that Lewis had, particularly what we've seen in COVID, an opportunity to become an area that sort of a magnet for these remote workers, particularly, like, obviously, they lend themselves to sort of professional services or even technology, within the technology vertical even. So, I've had some discussions around creating a sort of, as a incubator, you know, kind of like a Silicon Valley model, where Lewis is an attractive place to live. You can work remotely, and we've already done some things as a city. I mean, look what we're doing with 5G, but as we, as a city, if we can continue to present ourselves as a place that is open to that and work in conjunction with, you know, the development, real estate companies, et cetera, to start to position Lewis as that type of, this type of area. So, sort of from a informal way, we started to gather, Tim and I have started to talk to folks outside, you know, within the community that either have experience within the venture capital area, or business, you know, local business owners, et cetera, so we would like to sort of create a think tank that involves maybe some council members, maybe some, again, local business owners that reach across different stake, you know, various stakeholders. Maybe that's University of Delaware, BB, like I said, small businesses. You know, I think real estate would be, real estate developers would be an important part of this conversation to see, you know, what could we do as a community? How could we start to market and position ourselves as a place where you don't need a footprint of a brick and mortar, a huge footprint of a brick and mortar, but with technology, et cetera, we could become a place that incubates startup companies and allows for the wealthy community we have to invest in those companies and spend them, send them out, send them out outside of Lewis. So, I think that's really a reality, given the intelligency of our community, the experience that we have, that I don't see why we couldn't become something like that. That's obviously a long-term goal, but we can start thinking about that now, and because of COVID, we've seen that it's, we're adaptable to that.
You mentioned you and Tim have already started talking to people about this. What information have you gleaned so far?
Not really. So much is gathering, like, so, like I mentioned, folks who have experienced in running venture capital firms, et cetera, so we've not formally put together anyone. Just a discussion around people, is this viable, and who would the different stakeholders need to be to be included in this conversation, to make, making sure that we're touching different areas that are important, obviously, would maybe some representatives from Sussex County, you know, that type of thing as well, but. And that's the way you think about how any of these, that's why University of Delaware probably be an important part, but any of these kind of incubator communities, whether it be the Bay Area or Boston, you have, again, you have to have the university, that's why I think a university would have to play in to a certain extent, but you also have to have an area that's attractive that people want to go to, and it used to be the barrier around here was, well, we're not near an airport, and I don't think that's that big of a deal now with things like Zoom, but more importantly, if it's, if we're talking about investing in venture capital terms, these kind of people are flying in and out of Georgetown. They're not going, they're not coming in and out of a Philadelphia airport.
Tim, do you want to add anything to that?
I think, I think of using the University of Delaware as Andrew has described, is the, what I will call the perfect germ for this incubator idea. There should, I do not know the resources of the university. I'm not familiar with the infrastructure of the university and the different programs they offer, but it seems that for the models that we've seen of this being applied, as Andrew said, in Boston, in, on the West Coast, the universities are key to the success of this kind of, this kind of, creating this kind of environment and bringing the right resources into making it successful.
All I can say, that, and this does not try to throw cold water on the idea, but the dean, De Nacogona, who is the dean of the university's campus here, is now located permanently in Wilmington. She comes here at best twice a month. Okay, and so that creates some big hurdles. She not only has schools under her that are here, but schools that are up on the main campus. And so, as she has explained to me, if she's going to be a dean of the school, she needs to be where the other deans are, and where she is in constant contact with the president's office and that kind of information. And so that's why she is located in Wilmington, or in Dorf. So.
Go ahead. And what I would say, in my mind, I, I'm not real familiar with the program that we have here, the local campus. I think of the University of Delaware in this, for this purpose of this discussion, it's not tied to just the marine studies, but actually, I would expect their business school there to have professors who would have, first of all, a desire and interest to spend some time in Lewis, and they might already be here, but to give them an opportunity to actually contribute to this initiative. The other part that I do not know yet, and maybe you do, Ted, is does the county have an economic development office? And how viable is it? The thing that I think that is critical, and I think that is something that Andrew and I have spoken about, and that is, I think we're on a slippery slope if we continue to create our budgets and balance them based upon rooftop constructions, you know, the expansion of more residential properties and the transfer tax. Yeah, I think it's really important that we, that we create an opportunity for people to live and work here and not, and not just contribute to the building boom that we have, that we're experiencing presently.
Can I ask a question? As everybody knows, I tend to be a little concrete, and, I mean, these are very interesting ideas and very visionary, and I applaud you for that. But what I guess I don't know, because I don't know anything about incubation zones, I mean, I simply don't know. What is it that a town like Lewis needs to do? I mean, our, you know, our tax structure is incredible, our taxes are incredibly low, right? Our, the physical attributes of the area in terms of why someone might want to be here are obvious. The education system is good and improving. So, what is it that this, I'm striving to understand what it is the city itself can do. I mean, we can certainly form alliances with the county and the business community and that sort of thing, but, but what is it that, is your vision that the city would be the this sort of coordinator of this sort of thing, or are there particular ordinances you're thinking about? I mean, how, what are the sort of first steps from, concrete steps from getting to where we are now to what you envision?
Well, I mean, if you're talking about direct investment, it could be so far as partnering with the university, similar to what we're talking about with Murr, for example, where you're creating a technology park, and the city shares in a part of that, and the university shares in a part of that, the state, et cetera. And then the benefit, then, we were talking about sustainability of the economy, is as the technologies come out of there, there's a license that is associated with that. And the revenue that comes from that license, if it's a good business, that can be shared universally, so that's, that's the kind of the business case to the success of having that here. And then what you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Of business licenses, that that's, I mean, that's the kind of direct return on investment that the city might get?
Or royalty from the technologies that are coming out of there if you're investing in that technology.
You mean if the city directly invested tax funds in the products being created?
Or supplied the land, and therefore you're getting a piece of the royalty due to that.
I have to tell you, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that the city would be involved in that kind of a speculative undertaking. I'm not against the idea, I mean, the city doesn't have any land to give. Let's start there. But if it did, I mean, I wouldn't be against the idea of the city leasing on, you know, on very favorable terms, you know, someplace for these folks to plunk down, but, but taking tax revenue and putting it into, you know, what might or might not be the next Google.
No, no, we're not saying they're investing capital. That's what I'm saying. The relationship would simply be, as you said, a land lease, and
I misunderstood you.
Yeah, therefore, your participation in giving the land lease affords you 2% of any future royalties, and if you're, if a Tesla is formed out of Lewis, 2% of a trillion dollars is a lot.
Yes, it is.
I do think there may be some opportunity to talk to something like SPI Pharma. They're an organization that quietly goes about their business. They're processing a half a million gallons of seawater every day. They're one of only two sites in their whole operation where they extract magnesium from seawater. We know very little about their operation, and what, and, you know, it's a company that is very quiet, moves about their business, and really, they've been here 50 years. And, you know, is there an opportunity to do more with them? I don't know. Their leadership, they have, you know, the other plant that they extract magnesium out of seawater is in Marseille, France. So, you know, I mean.
I'll volunteer for a field visit.
I think we all will. Like, have a city council meeting. But no, it's a company that is here going quietly about their business. And obviously, when we had the spill, we probably heard more about them than we did at all for probably a couple of years, because they had to stop their process for a while. So, I think, you know, what's going on with them? Is there something we could do that we could work with them on? Are they looking to grow in another direction? They were definitely impacted when the railroad disappeared. Interestingly enough, they quietly never objected to that. They switched from hauling a rail car out, or two rail cars out every 10 days, to trucking it out by night, and did that on their own. And as far as I know, and I've been here, I've been part of city council since that whole process evolved, I have never had a complaint about their trucks that come and go at night, never. So, this is a company that really has tried to be respectful of the community, you know, what can we do to work with them?
I just think the workforce, the landscape is changing in the future, and it's going to be more home-based.
Well, I agree.
I think Lewis is a perfect place to.
Yeah.
So, I guess, my question, to kind of take these ideas and move them, is there benefit to creating a committee, not that we need more committees, but a committee that would kind of oversee? I mean, I consider this economic development kind of looking to diversify the economy, to add a sector that would have, you know, help to support the continued viability of the commercial sector and make it more of a year-round economy.
Well, Bonnie makes a good point, too, and to what specific degree does, does the city, can the city participate in that, you know, is it, you know, like I said, we're doing some of it with 5G, or can we, you know, are things like utilities holding us, holding us back in terms of not, people not being hooked up to nat gas, or, you know, if you're coming from, moving from New Jersey or from some other city area, and you're used to having these things, what more, you know, can we do to move the needle to make it a place where you have the things that are going to be necessary to either work remotely, or whatever, or just be an attractive place to do business?
One of the things.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, one of the basic needs that we would probably need is to identify some kind of meeting space, if, I'll call it that, or office space that would be, could be made available at very advantageous rent rates to be able to, you know, give, create that environment for people to be able, dedicate that space for entrepreneurs to be able to come and collect and have meetings and have presentations, you know, from these experts in the fields, to be able to spawn the kind of creativity, the entrepreneurship that we're looking for. So, the city, when it might have a place there, might have a voice in that, they might be able to be a player in that.
One of the things we might want to do, before we get too far out here, is talk to Bill Paff, who's the Economic Development Director for the county. In terms.
What's his last name, please?
P-A-F-S.
Isn't it P-F-A-F-F? I know it had like a letter.
Yeah, you're right. I think you're right.
Okay.
It's pronounced like Faf, like?
Yes.
Faf, like that?
Or the P. He pronounces it Faf. Anyway. Bill is very visible. He's been around a long time. He's only been the county economic development director for about two years. But he's been involved in the county for a long time, and I think Janelle probably knows him well.
To your point, you're also making Ted about their, the University of Delaware's interest towards Lewis, you know, I'm kind of making the the opposite pitch, which is, again, the idea of royalties and licenses, if they, if they think they can make money out of having an incubator, they might be more interested, because no one wants to live, no, I mean, no offense to Newark, but no one wants to live in Newark.
I won't tell Jerry Clifton that. I think if you, I think if you might be Anne Marie's son, you want to live in Newark, right, Anne Marie?
That's where, that's where my son wants to live now.
Right. Okay. But I think, you know, starting with, I think one of the things that's interesting is to most of the county, when you talk to Bill, I think he'll tell you that Lewis is already in very good economic shape. And when, because they're looking at places like Laurel and Seaford, Georgetown, and Bridgeville, where they, you know, they need to, you know, they're really depressed communities. And so I think that it's kind of skews some of this, and there, in terms of attracting larger industry, I mean, we're obviously looking at much smaller industry, but attracting larger industry, there's landmass over there where they can do things to attract corporations. I think one of the challenges, there are two challenges that I would see automatically with this, and one of them is transportation. We have no good public transportation, to speak of. I hardly, I mean, Route 204 with the Del Dot or the Dart Bus is great. It comes from, you know, it comes right in Savannah Road, goes to the ferry, turns around, and goes right back out. There's no other, you know, lateral transportation. And the other thing is high-speed access. FiOS never came to Lewis. It bypassed us. It went directly to Rehoboth.
What high speed do they have? Do they have Verizon?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, but, but, I mean Comcast is.
Right.
It's better than MediaCom.
Well, it's certainly better than dial-up service that exists in the western side.
Well, I'll tell you with my seven MGPPSs, whatever they are, up in New Hampshire, now that's, that's a challenge. But I would add to Ted's list that not only do we that not only do we not have good public transportation, although I don't know if venture capitalists take buses, I kind of doubt it. But we also have, we have gridlock on the roads when on for vehicular transportation. So, you know, that's another issue. That said, I I agree with Andrew that this is a very, I mean, we're all here, right? This is a very attractive place to live and it has a wonderful style. I will say one other thing to consider in all of this is you ultimately, i- i- if if you, a couple of years ago, I had somebody say to me about something they thought should happen in Lewis, and they said, well, don't you want to have that Southampton vibe? And I thought about that for a long time. And I said, no, not personally. I if I wanted to live in Southampton, well, I can't afford to live in Southampton. But if I wanted to live in a Southampton like place, I would. And that's not what we have here. What we have here currently, and again, this is a fairly recent development in the sort of evolution of Lewis, but what we have here now is a retirement community. And if if you if you fundamentally change, and and I realize we're talking about baby steps here. But looking down the road, if you fundamentally change what mix you're looking for here, your your property values change, your demand for, as as Andrew was just saying, I mean, if someone is in wherever, New Jersey, and they're used to this, that and the other service, municipal services and otherwise, you know, it it will change the nature of the place. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just saying it's that if if we are planning for that, I think we need to look at all those changes that come that the I'm not going to say it's good or it's bad, but it's a change that comes along with the goal that you're articulating. And that that's fine. Change happens. But I but I do think it's something to consider as we go down this road.
Yeah.
I mean, no, no one knows that Lewis changes more than I do. And it will continue to change.
Yeah. So if you're looking, if you're looking to attract smaller startup kinds of things, then I think you have to look at, you know, what does our code say about home office businesses?
Right?
You know, what what does it allow? You know, right now, I think our code limits the number of parking or the amount of parking that can be dedicated on in a residential neighborhood for business operation. Also limits the types of businesses. If you're gonna try to, if you're gonna try to start this kind of thing, you got to start with, you know, the codes are not necessarily attractive to that. And is that something we want to have happen?
And that's why I think a good starting place is potentially what we've done is just have outside, you know, community sort of participation, see what what we need. I think that's, you know, where we've started, I think is probably good.
Okay. I think maybe another topic that is is worth talking about, and when I was on the foundation board at the hospital, I carried this torch pretty far, I thought was, you know, what happens as BB moves out? What are we left with? Right now, you know, they're taking a lot of the same day surgeries and short term stay surgeries out to 24, and that'll happen within the year. And that's going to change the complex, the what happens here.
And some of the, for example, some of the gridlock that Bonnie described can be attributed to people driving into Lewis to get to that hospital presently. And with that pressure relieved, there'll be less gridlock. You know, it there are there are lots of things that are in flux here.
But that also might mean that there'll be fewer people going to our restaurants for lunch.
That's and that's again, that gets back to really why this is such, I think, why we this issue of trying to diversify our economy is so important. You know, we are our shops and our restaurateurs are highly dependent upon a 90 day period to make their make their money, you know, for a three month period, they rent their spaces for 12 months at a time or whatever it is, their revenue stream is all about what they make in a 90 day period. Pardon?
I think you're a little short on your 90 day period. I think it's more like 150, but that's
Okay, well, it might extend into up to 150 days, but nonetheless, I'm sure most of these shopkeepers and restaurateurs would welcome the opportunity to have a more level and consistent revenue stream rather than just building to meet the demand for the summer season and the shoulder season and then dry up, you know, there there are shops here that have no trade throughout a business day during the winter time. And yet they, you know, they have personnel in there, they have the lights on, the heat on, etc. They're incurring costs.
So that so that goes to another question, Tim. Should we should we limit how many houses, how many percent, what percentage of our properties are available for Airbnb and things like that? If we're trying to attract people to be here full time? Because right now, what's driving the real estate market is a lot of properties are being converted to casual rentals.
That's correct. And that feeds the whole speculative market because the realtors are selling the buyers on the idea of what money they can make on their property at these inflated acquisition prices. I understand what's, you know, what's going on here. But getting back to the original description of the profile, the the person that Andrew just offered, just earlier today, I had the opportunity to meet a someone I had never met before and and learn that this person is now living here in Lewis and has been living here since April of 2020 because of COVID and has not been back to his home in Washington since then. Because in fact, he's learned that, you know, all his meetings are on Zoom, he's no longer having to travel, he cannot travel, does not expect to actually resume to traveling after the COVID crisis has been resolved and is now the his his what he described to me was it now makes sense for Lewis to be the full time home and DC to be the place where you might escape to for two days a week for, you know, business. And then with the idea that, again, Lewis is going to be the the full time residence. And then I have met during this, my activity, my involvement with the beach beach parking committee and spending a lot of time on the beach, I met, I cannot tell you how many people I spoke to on the beach who who are doing the same thing. They're living here in Lewis full time now. And on occasion, they run back to DC, they run back to Baltimore to do their business for a day or two, and then they come right back. And they and they've all said that they, this is something they expect to be their their new reality. I mean, for for the forever, not just until the end of COVID. So I see a trend. I'm suggesting I see a trend.
Yeah.
And I and with that, I think the idea of identifying ourselves as a retirement community is that's changing. And it will be affected by more and more people of working ages choosing to work and live here.
Well, so are are we gonna, you and the two of you want to meet with Bill and have a conversation and come back to us with ideas of what what the results are of your conversation with him?
I think that makes sense and see where they already are and they're planning for this, see if they've recognized it as a trend with what they see. Yeah, makes sense. I I'm happy to do that if you are, Tim.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, great. We'll look forward to your report. Thank you.
All right. So the the one thing that was mentioned, and this was brought up by staff, was assess strategies for increasing revenues from existing programs where we're currently losing them. So I don't know if whoever wrote that is here and has specific examples, ideas? Anyone?
I think that was me.
Ah ha, okay.
I I don't have anything specific and I don't know, being new to to the city government, what sort of assessments we do. I know that, you know, certainly when you're looking at possibly increasing you know, the fee for services, there that that can be a very tense situation for those people receiving the services. But I just thought, you know, are we? I think my thought was, are we maximizing that that revenue from, you know, the the services that the city does provide? And I, you know, as I said, I don't know what sort of assessment we do. Has it been done like a year ago or two years ago? Do we need to look at that? So that was kind of my my train of thought and folks that have been around much longer than I in the city government can probably answer that. So
Okay.
If it's not something that we need to look at, then we, you know, don't need to look at it, but.
I mean, and we certainly do evaluate fees, but that doesn't mean that we've covered everything. So could be, you know, possible. So we will will certainly continue to look at this. I mean, so one, just one example, we've recently engaged host compliance and they're supposed to be helping us keep on top of the the rentals and license, making sure that that rental short term in particular are licensed. And one of the observations they've provided to us is that where the and Lorraine, feel free to correct me if I'm remembering this wrong, but I think they said we're either the only or one of the few communities that they've worked with where the short term rental is licensed the same way that your long term rentals are licensed. So if if I'm renting an apartment to somebody for $1,000 a month and they have a a year long lease, I pay the same rental fee and the same 5%. Now, obviously, 5% of a different amount as the the people who are renting a property for, you know, a couple thousand to 5,000 a week. And, you know, so that that is a recommendation that has come from that company that we look to kind of differentiate the short term and long term rental. So so I think that that would be an example of where you know, if you look at other similarly situated communities, there are other practices that that bring in more revenue and and so, you know, I think a- as we continue to work with host compliance, that may be something that comes down.
Two comments to that, Emery. One, the long, the the thousand, the example you used of the $1,000 a month rental is generally speaking, somebody who's being, that's something that's being rented to someone who is of limited means. Whereas the 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 person who's coming here for weekend rental or under Airbnb is generally more affluent and it and obviously it changes the value of a property. If a property can demonstrate that they're realizing a $50,000 revenue versus a $12,000 revenue in an annual basis, it changes changes the ability to mortgage that property. And so therefore it has an inflationary action on real estate values. The other thing that I think might be helpful is, and I'm not sure that we have this as a list, but I think it might be helpful and Lorraine could probably easily provide it, is if we had a list of when did we last do an increase to the meters, a business license increase, a what was, how many years has it been? I think it's seven years since we had a down, an increase to the downtown meters. When did we do the, when did we do, did we do the last do a an increase or adjust the the business licenses? I think it's three or four years.
Right. One thing I'd say about that is that sort of thing, I think, if it's done in the budget cycle.
Yeah.
Now that we have tasked Ellen the rain with the very tedious task of putting together what it is we do in the budget, that's that that kind of mission, if it's done in the budget cycle, it was done before, we'd have to come up with another way to some kind of Excel. But hopefully in the future, all I'm saying is I think we may have a ready resource for that.
Yeah, I think Tim and Andrew, in in short of conversations like we're having now, or unless they've asked the question, they don't know that it's been seven years since the downtown parking meters have been adjusted. And people forget, I I I do too. I mean, how long has it been, you know, for some of these things? So to to Janet's point, you know, are we keeping pace even with inflation, let alone what we want to pass along?
Well, I, you know, I actually, I I was gonna ask Janet to actually explain her her idea or her concern a little bit better than what I presently understand it. Did I understand you, Janet, to say that you were suggesting that we the note that I took in my own language was that we, I thought you spoke about monetizing existing programs. Is is that in fact what you said, or that's my paraphrasing?
Oh, you mean taking programs that were not asking for a fee for service for and and asking that, that's that's not what I was suggesting. What what I'm suggesting is exactly what the mayor had just articulated and Anne Marie articulated is looking at what we're already charging a fee for service for and are we are we maximizing that? Are we looking at? As the mayor said, the last time we made an adjustment to those figures, does it do the fees that we charge, are they comparable to what other communities of our size are charging? You could think about the Marina. You know, are we competitive with what other municipalities of our size and in our our general geographic area charging? Are we maximizing our potential there for for revenue?
An illustration of that, a few years ago, we we had a whole thing about the fee structure for weddings in various in the parks and our fee was like 50 bucks. And and then we we split it, recognizing that a wedding in Mary Vessels Park was quite different than a wedding in Canalfront.
Right.
And so we have two, we we split that into two different fee structures. And and so I think that that's the kind of thing you're getting at, Janet.
Yes, and and being so new, as I said earlier, being so new to to the process here and what's been done in the past versus, you know, where we're going, I kind of threw it out there. Is it something that we need to look at?
Okay, so you you were not suggesting that services that are presently provided without a fee attached to it. You're not suggesting that we undo that, are you?
That was not my intent, no.
Okay.
Unless, as Janet says, if if another municipality is and it seems reasonable, maybe we adopt it.
You know, I'll I'll give you an example and and I'll give you my opinion about the example, but most municipalities at this point charge a fee for trash pickup. I kind of like that we don't. I think that it's something that we can, we can say to our residents that this is, you know, a a benefit we provide and and it's something but but knowing that all around us, municipalities are charging for it. It is something that if, you know, if costs keep going up and, you know, it it is something that could be considered. I I personally like including it as part of your tax base.
Yeah, because if you are, if you are trying to distinguish yourself as a city and separate from the county, it's important that the services are distinguished themselves. And all the communities in the county have private trash pickup. And that is because they're in unincorporated areas. And, you know, the example of trash pickup, I think, or trash service is possibly not the best example to use.
But most most municipalities at this point charge for it separate.
Is, okay, well, that must be a Delaware thing. Okay.
I think it's happened as the state has layered regulations on. When the, when the state said, now you have to recycle. Now you have to separate yard waste. All of it's increased the cost for the service. And most municipalities provide residential pickup, as as do we. And I think a lot of the commercial property owners did not want to pay that in their in a tax increase and 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 it also then would cover your churches and things like that sometimes to get those services. So, I mean, it, so it is a municipal thing, but I I agree. I like the way we have it.
And Marie, do the other municipalities do it on an opt out basis? So the final citizen of Lewis, but I don't want my trash picked up, I can say no.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Well, that's good because you don't want people tempted to dump their truck.
Yeah, no, it's it's a, it's a bill that you get. Ellen Lorraine, you're in Millsboro. Millsboro charges, don't they?
No, they went to private hauler.
Okay, so you pay the private hauler, though. Right, so they don't include it as part of the tax.
Well, trucks coming into your municipality, if you go to our.
Well, the other.
Oh, so you contract directly with the private hauler. Oh, okay.
If you think back to when we started recycling, it was an optional service and people paid for it. You know, it was, it was a very nominal fee. It was like 35 bucks a year. But you got a trash cart. I beg your pardon.
I said, or you could schlepp it down to American Legion Road.
Well, that was a whole other story, but but but, you know, when we first. Look, Bonnie remembers that, who was it that I? He and I did that whole presentation at the farmer's market, what, 10 years ago, where we were selling trash carts?
Cat, you you you, I remember it very well. And as we all know, I can't remember anything. You had, you had cat, cat cans, cat food cans. And said, look, can't leave all the cat food in there. I remember. I mean, to to Anne Marie's point about, you know, whether trash pickup is sort of a general service or a pay for a fee, fee for service. You know, you could make a distinction with the commercial buildings that don't, that don't get. I mean, I've made this point before, but commercial buildings don't get city pickup. However, commercial buildings do have city pick up the trash along Second Street and Third Street, and they take more of the police resources and blah, blah, blah. So I do think that that's something like trash, something like yard waste, something like recycling. I think those are are general services that should be covered, my two cents should be covered through a, through a, a general tat, real property increase rather than trying to impose and collect, it set impose and collect. Because I'll tell you, the next thing that's going to happen is you're going to have somebody who lives on the beach or somebody who spent in, I don't know, Pilot Town, who spends the winter in Florida, come in and say, but I don't use those services in the winter.
No, I I think that for our community, it's definitely the better way. But i- if you do look at municipal trends, I know Janelle just chatted me that she lives in Milford and they do charge on their monthly utility bill. Again, the city ourselves, we don't issue a monthly bill. So would, you know, I I I'm not in favor of it, but it it is one of those things that is a trend and it's out there if if there was ever.
Well, 10 years ago, we also tried the idea of charging for leaf pickup in the fall. We got such pushback from the community because we went from charging nothing, having a scheduled pickup to charging 50 bucks, and we got such pushback from the community.
Well, we had, we had to do that because the the state came down and said, you can't, I mean, it wasn't something we did on our own. And the state came back and said, it can no longer mix yard waste with garbage. Right. And that's why we had to do it. And then the question was just exactly the question we're having right now, which is, well, is somebody going to keep track of, you know, that person had two bags and that person had five bags? And it was decided that that was idiotic.
Sometimes charging for a, for a service just creates such an administrative burden that it's not even worth it.
Right.
Well, not only that, but because if if someone breaks leaves, right? And it leaves, you know, I get my neighbor's leaves all the time and vice versa. So, you know, how does that work? And more than that, there was kind of a question of, well, don't we want people to, you know, have their houses look as good as they look now? And are they going to do that if they have to?
I'll show you. I just won't break my leaves this year.
Or I'm, I'm just gonna, I mean, you know, you just end up with, it's just easier to share what is in fact a shared cost.
Agreed.
It also comes down to the overall appearance of the community. All right, are there more? I think we've covered a lot of what's on, under this budget finance topic in this discussion we've had for the last hour.
All right, he- here's an elephant and there's, the two next ones are pretty, pretty meaty issues, growth.
Yeah.
So management of environmental issues while responding to growth pressure and growth issues. And I think, you know.
I think some of the time I would like to put a moat around and
Right.
draw, drawbridge.
A moat or a fence?
A wall.
Oh, great.
So, anybody have the, I mean, I I think this is more just a statement that this is going to be an issue that we continue to face. I think, you know, the 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 planning commission is working on a lot of issues to kind of balance how we deal with these things with the number of subcommittees they have. We're also working on trying to figure out how we promote annexation so that we can try to control what happens in and around the Lewis area. So I don't know. Do we need an hour long discussion on?
I don't think so. I think the fact that we're working on buffer ordinances and Janelle, I know you're really carrying the load on with, in terms of keeping those things moving.
That, that and the sea level rise committee, I mean, and which Janelle is also doing a fabulous job keeping that moving forward, along with people in the committee, of course, but those, those recommendations are going to be, are basically going to be about how you restrict both the physical plant and, you know, the, the, the everything's going to be taller, well, not taller, everything's going to be further further above. Yeah, for thank you, elevated, exactly. It's exactly the words, elevated. It won't be any taller unless we change those rules. But and also there's a lot of discussion about what to do with all the water created from the impervious surface. So th- those issues are it it runs directly into growth pressure.
Right.
And it's going to be a really important decision for this, for this community.
Right.
Anything else on that one? Did I, I might have killed my pen.
Anne Marie, could I ask a favor of you?
Sure.
Would you, would you reread your, what you read to start this part of the conversation? Would you read that again aloud?
Read what? The, oh, management of environmental issues while responding to growth pressure and growth issues. Where the the items identified.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like a book Anne Marie might have read.
Maybe when she's writing.
Maybe Janelle and I are co-authoring. All right.
I think you'd have lots of co-authors on that.
So the next, the next elephant in the room, which got three responses that stated this is the BPW relationship. Again, we, this is another one we've had significant discussion about. I think that the point of it being here is that we need to somehow bring it to resolution. And it's on here as short term. So I think the idea is we we need to be able to to come to terms with where we are with the BPW and the the relationship and and all those intricacies. Hopefully this year, maybe.
I hope so. As you know, we've continued to meet, Bonnie and I, and we will have a meeting again coming up here real quickly.
When is your next meeting?
Wednesday.
Okay.
And so I think, you know, we continue to move, but it's ever so slow. It's not Wednesday, excuse me, it's, it's later. Anyway, it's coming up. And so, you know, at this point, we haven't, we haven't gotten any closure at all. And the issue remains one of how do we go? How do we, how, how do we work together to create some things? I think we did a great job in coming together to do the, the Jones Farm purchase. But that opened up another can of worms in terms of the titling of properties, which came back up and was a major hiccup that happened at the 11th and a half hour. You know, how are we gonna, you know, how are we, how do we deal with the titling of properties? And I can tell you that. Go ahead.
Quick clarification, I have that meeting down as Monday, the 11th. Is it the 13?
It is. You're right. It's the 11th. Yeah, that's, that's why I corrected myself. It's not Wednesday.
Thank you. I'm like, did I get that wrong? Thanks very much. I agree. I, both sides need to come together and find common ground. I mean, it's like, it's the obvious way that all disputes are resolved. And we're trying to do that. It's slow.
It is slow. There's a lot of emotion tied up, you know, in, in this. And it's it's been a long time coming and it's not, I don't think it's going to be on, put to bed easily. Although I, you know, I think Ernie, Pete and Steve have been interested in seeing that happen. It it just, the the two charters, we feel that they clearly recognize that they are subordinate to us. They don't want to recognize that. And you know, that's where the hang up lies. And.
I have a question. The meeting that you all have, the meeting you have on the 11th, will Steve and Ernie be present at that? Or is this just between the two of you and two of them?
No, no, it'll be the six of us.
Now, is that a Zoom meeting?
It is a Zoom meeting.
Okay. So do I need to set that up?
I think you probably do.
Okay. I'll put a note in another spot that that isn't going to get lost in my notes from today.
I think the other person will be there, will be Jackie, who takes notes. So. But other than that, we had the attorney there from the legislature last time who did a good job of listening, I think. But, you know, I don't think there was any, any positive outcome of that meeting.
Let me ask you a question about a meetings like this. You mentioned that Jackie is going to be taking notes. Are 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 those notes available to all council members to review so that we're kept apprised of what, what is being discussed and where the discussions are? Is that?
They could be available once, once they're approved by the the group. Yeah, I don't see why not. Do you have any problem with that, Bonnie? So I think, you know, if we approve our meeting, our December.
But I do think we need to ask the the board as well. I mean, because if if we, you know, share the, share the minutes with council, which I don't have a problem with, they should know so that they can share the minutes if they don't already with the other members of the board. I mean, I would say that, you know, they should be kept in confidence. These are, these are obviously negotiations to try. If they they go forward, they go back and they go sideways. So, you know, I don't think it helps the process if 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 they get widely distributed. But that's my only sort of thought about it.
Yeah, that would be mine too. So we'll confirm that on Monday when we have our meeting. And if so, when we approve the minutes from our December meeting, we'll release them. Which I, which I anticipate we will do on Monday.
Thank you very much.
I would also say that we we put on the plan last time or the discussion last time of developing like a Schley Avenue master plan and sort of thing. So this, that represents an opportunity to demonstrate that we can cooperate and and work together in a more immediate short term opportunity.
I mean.
And they're already on the deeds of that property, so we don't need to.
Right. But I can tell you, I'll just give you an example of how sensitive or how raw some of this is. We had an Eagle Scout who built the new information board on the site across the street from the Dogfish Inn.
Okay.
That was approved by council a couple of years ago.
It was approved by council before I started, so it's been a long time.
Took a few years for it to get built. It's a very well built structure. It, I think it had been, the information about it had been shared verbally, but never formally shared with the board. In an executive session, I got quizzed very heavily about why would we allow something that belonged that the city put on their property? And they didn't have a say in how it was how it was, how it was placed.
Like I said, it takes two willing parties to come up with an agreement.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, that's relatively minor thing, but it's it's a very raw nerve. But we will report.
And do we have that list yet, Ted? Do we have the list yet?
Which list?
Of their out of, out of, out of city customers.
Oh, no, of course not. No.
Okay.
Press told me he would. I I don't think you know this. I I know Anne Marie and I think Rob knows. Darren apparently had an extended vacation for Christmas. He reported back to duty yesterday for his first day since before Christmas. So I'm anticipating it won't happen yet this week. The the ask was that it be delivered before Christmas and it didn't.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, are we ready for the next one?
Sure, why not? Unless somebody else has a, how many comment I'll make on that.
All right, the next one was cybersecurity. And I think we all watch the news and we know that governments are a major target and you know, so this is a big priority. We do have a company that that is working with us on this and we expect to be able to have them brief you all in an executive session sometime in the next month as they wrap up their work. And then there will be a lot of follow up work that we'll need to do to, to put things into place. So.
Unfortunately, we thought the Homeland Security Office from federal level would be helpful. They were less than helpful.
Yeah, well, we couldn't get a call back. You know, we played phone tag where they will call us back a month and a half later. And so, yeah, so it didn't quite pan out, but.
We're moving ahead.
Yep. So.
Anyone from the state level, Anne Marie, helpful?
Um, so I'm going to say not really. The the Department of Technology and Information, or is it tech? Technology, telecommunications, whatever, the the State IT Department. Their, their prior secretary was helpful in terms of moral support, but they aren't necessarily like getting down on the ground with us and and doing things. So I really think that the company that we hired will be the one that that is is helpful. We are able to attend the statewide cybersecurity meetings. But again, they're, I I I think the real meat and potatoes is going to be our own efforts.
Right, but we did, we did take, did add a cybersecurity policy to our, our property and casualty policy this year.
Anne Marie, one of the areas I suggested earlier was a staffing needs scenarios. Is IT an area where you see could, the city could? Is, is IT an area where you see could, the city could invest in that area from a staffing standpoint in the future, or if not this year?
Um, you know, the, the problem, I think, is the workload is not so significant that I think it can justify a full position. So I think really if we get the, the you know, the practices that we need to put in place, do the training we're gonna need to do with our staff, and then work with our IT consultant, we should be in pretty good shape. Would you agree, Ellen Lorraine?
Yeah, I think it's manageable. We have certain times throughout the year that we are in more demand of IT. And this happened to be since the pandemic started, one of those times. But I do know when the consultant is here, they are, we keep them busy, but they do come twice a month.
And the, the consultant you all use is not the same provider of the cyber, cybersecurity
No.
product that you're, it's a different company, right?
Yeah, so cybersecurity is really a specialty. It, so e- even if we were to have an in-house person, they probably, you know, we're still going to have to rely on some degree of, of outside support because it truly is a specialty.
Yeah.
Are, are we working with the same consultant that perhaps helped Rehoboth or anybody?
We are working with the same consultant that the board has used.
Okay.
Same one BB used, was it?
Right.
I don't, I don't think so. I hope not.
I got a letter in the mail on that one.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. They said they didn't take any financial stuff, but just like your address, they got my address and all that, nothing.
Social Security. Yeah.
Don't worry that the credit rating agencies breached a couple of years ago, they got everything.
Right, exactly.
For what it's worth, the federal government has lost my information three times. It's been taken. I, at a certain point, it's like, I mean, don't get me wrong, cybersecurity is really, really important, particularly for our citizens. But it's like, you know, it just, it just seems like it's almost impossible to, to guard against these days.
Try living with a name like Andrew Williams.
If your name could be Joan.
Oh, that, yeah, that, you probably get dinged on plenty of other people's poor decisions of the past, right? So, all right. So then the next issue is parking concerns and issues. And we have the downtown parking committee getting ready to bring forward some recommendations on Monday. We've got three more meetings of the beach parking committee scheduled to maybe get some recommendations forward. I, I think that parking will probably be a continuous issue. But is there, is there anything specific we want to mention on that? Or just make sure we're keeping it on the front burner?
I think you, you, it's a front burner issue. I know that I continue to get emails, I'm sure Rob does too. And, and Tim, about, you know, what are we gonna do about next year of the beach stuff? And Rob, you want to comment on how your committee's coming?
Well, it's, it's coming in fits and starts and we'll, we'll have some report. We're gonna meet our deadline, we're not gonna ask an extension. And we'll report on whatever we manage to, to get through.
Okay. I think we're, we are making, just by, and we'll cover this Monday night, but we are making some headway with downtown. And I would tell you, the, the one thing I, that I'm pleased to hear is with the way we're going this year, there's been a dial back on the idea that we have to, the solution is a parking garage. I think we've identified some other issues. I think that's still a sub Rosa thing, but, but the idea that the only solution is, is a parking garage is, is not the, the same level of concern or idea. Would you agree, Andrew?
Agreed, I think we were willing to try out and see if the satellite sort of system can work. And I mean, the other thing we discussed, which isn't ready to come before council yet is, you know, the idea of we have these free kind of satellite areas is do we then motivate people to use those free areas by increasing potentially the, the cost of parking in the more like central areas and then working your way out toward there? So that, that might be something for us to think about as a group, if that makes sense and is part of that strategy.
Which is consistent with what Robert does. So. Okay. So are we ready for long-term things?
Yep. Now, we did talk about city facilities in terms of long-term and short-term when we talked before. And, and I think the general sense moving forward was kind of the, the first place to start on this was to engage with the BPW to see what we can do about the property on Schley to, to really plan for more efficient use of that property. And then obviously, we've got the ongoing review. I think, what did they call it, programming that we'll look at for the police department so that we can then start to move forward on, on what we need to do there. So I don't know, is there anything else that we didn't cover that needs to be said?
I would just say, the only thing I would add is that I think the need to routinely inspect, and now that Allison's in the position of facilities manager, inspect properties for condition. What has turned up in, in relationship to the Fisher Martin House is of great concern. A lot of deferred maintenance there, which is creating an even bigger problem, which we'll have to address.
Yep.
And so I think the importance of an annual inspection of properties for whatever is really going forward, something that will save the city money in the long
Yes. And, and we've talked about that being more, more than annual. I mean, I, I think depending on the building, you know, some buildings may be quarterly, you know.
Or seasonally.
Right. So.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Okay, so the, the next big grouping of, of topics is the police department. So there were two things submitted, one just says police department, the other says revisiting police function, microcosm of big city warrior model versus quality of life. So
Maybe he wants to comment, so.
I'm sorry, Ted.
I said the chief is on, if he wanted to comment on either of them.
Yeah, I'm here, man. No, I prefer to listen and I can certainly answer any questions.
Okay.
Well, the, the one thing I would say is unfortunately, the activities that earlier this week showed, particularly Biden's gonna live in our area, that policing might maybe take on a larger function than we anticipated. Unfortunately.
Yeah. It'll be interesting to see what happens. I did have a report from that, the water, that David Green, who manages the, the water taxi, went from, went down to Rehoboth to check out the new water, the new dockage facility on there. And on his way down the canal, he ran into Secret Service in the canal. And this morning's paper had an article that the, the helicopter for Marine One is going to land in the parking lot at, at the, at Jordan's Pond. They designated that for the helicopter.
Well, I, I think Andrew is right, after the events of this week, I think security around the president-elect and then president, when he becomes president, is going to be even tighter. And we will end up seeing more of a presence and, and that may have implications on our officers as well.
Yeah.
Way to come down for the Secret Service, they're used to staying at Mar-a-Lago and now we've got a
Boardwalk, what, the Boardwalk Plaza isn't good enough for you, Rob?
Honestly
Airbnb.
I, I would much rather stay at the Delaware Beach than be in Florida, so.
Well, I suspect that one of the things that will happen is, unlike President Bush, who had Walker's Point and others who've had large properties of their own, President Biden, once, once he's in office, will be encouraged to use Camp David because of the ability to secure it. He may make a frequent or semi-frequent visits here, but I suspect the Secret Service will encourage him to use a facility that can be much tighter, much more tightly controlled. You, it looks like you agree with me, Bonnie.
I, I, I do agree with you. If anyone who's gone up to the Camp David area knows, it's, it, it's very well-secured and it's also proximate to Washington. So, well, you know, I mean, I'm sure Biden will come up here. And I, and I think Andrew raises a good point because it, you know, it could be that the, the Rehoboth police will need, you know, will need help from time to time. But really, Biden, it, it will be on ancillary things. I mean, the Secret Service doesn't share.
Right.
Right, you know, one of the questions
Very good reason.
One of the questions that I've had about the, with Biden now being, going to be our president, is how, first of all, Chief Spell might, might have been approached by the Secret Service just as a, and he might have something to offer with respect to some discussions he might have had with Secret Service. But in addition, I would expect that BB would be impacted by the, the chance that a president might need medical services while he is close by. And if in fact, there have been any demands placed upon BB in a planning, just in the forms of a planning discussion. Does anyone know?
We can certainly ask Dr. Tam, I suspect that that's pretty much confidential information.
Yeah, Tim, I will say, when he was here for a couple of different times as Vice President, we were intimately involved with the Secret Service. However, as Bonnie pointed out, they don't share well for, for obvious reasons. And, you know, we maintained exterior coverage or a lot of undercover, like when he went on a bike ride and in, in advance of his route, accompanied by a Secret Service person, just so they, you know, could get an accurate lay of the land and know where everything was and directions and all. So, you know, we are involved, but it's, you know, it's not like we're upfront.
You know, I understand, I understand. But you have confirmed that you are a part, they are in dialogue with you.
Yeah, consistently.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
I think Stan Mills reported that they were, they were being 70, giving 72 hours notice in advance of, of the president making an appearance in Rehoboth.
And the state police are typically very involved as well. So. So, yeah. So, a- any other police department discussions? Obviously, we have the, the Police Review Committee is gonna be looking at the report that was issued and, and possibly making some modifications and sending it back to council.
The only quick, the only statement I ever comment I will make is, and I thought of this after the events of what happened on Capitol Hill, was just the, the importance that our police be really well-trained. And I know Chief Spell has spoken to that in the past. And I just want to make sure that he has the resources, that we have the resources to make sure that our police department, that they continue to receive training and that it's the best that we can provide for them. That's all, thank you.
Well, and I'll just add to that, that Chief Spell, I think, more than any other chief I could remember, sorry, more than any other chief that I can remember, has stressed professionalism in the force and, and training and, you know, and, and a deep and nuanced understanding of, of the legal principles that, that, that they are charged with, with enforcing. And my hat's off to him for that, that's really important.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. So the next one is, is ocean, I'm sorry, open space, climate change, sea level rise, flooding. So it's all of those challenges. I mean, they all relate to each other, so I kind of put them all together. You know, these issues have come up in, in the, the past strategy sessions. Again, the, the Planning Commission, when, when you get the Planning Commission action plan coming your way on, on Monday evening, it will be, I think Janelle would agree, chock full of things that relate to these issues. We've got multiple subcommittees under the, the Planning Commission addressing them. I don't know, o- other than identifying that this is and will continue to remain a priority for us to, to work on these issues, were there any other points of discussion here?
I would just like to say, I think Tim raised this before around, you know, Janelle brings up the, the theme of that each thing is a piece and that they fit into a puzzle. And I, I think I struggle with it and I think Tim seems to have as well raised this around. I agree with that, that process and that, that idea, but it's hard for me as a, you know, someone that's not in there to see where does each of these pieces fit into the puzzle. So I don't know, that needs to be at a session level, or whether you could just take the time with Tim and myself to just kind of, I guess explicitly tell us, here's how I see this fitting in and this is where this step follows next and so on. Because that, that would just be helpful to me as we go through to understand what's the overall picture we're going for. You know, I, I would appreciate that, just as from a personal, I don't speak for the rest of council, but I think Tim and, I'll, I'll speak for Tim and myself on that one.
Speak for me.
Yep. One thing that's not here is community education. And it's gonna be an endless project. But it's, you know, reiterating, we ought to look at anything we publish that has to do with environmental concerns or regulations in terms of how does it relate to these topics? You know, and include some statement in them. So that people don't, and I think as we look at this on Monday night, the, the idea that this has, you know, the community impact on this and, and that we need the cooperation of our population, of our citizens, to make sure the success of, that we continue to remain viable.
Absolutely.
I think we, we can't say it often enough. I mean, we sound like a broken record, but I think it's something we have to keep reiterating.
One other thing, point that I would make is, you know, we talked a little bit earlier about the importance of resolving our, our issues with the BPW. And this is, again, another one of those areas where we need to work together to make these things work. Because we're, we're, you know, they are responsible for stormwater. And a lot of a, a lot of the issues that surround these things all come back to stormwater and floodwater and where does water go, you know, which you can't really separate. So, so that's gonna be an important relationship as it relates to that.
Maybe BPW can figure out how to use all that stormwater instead of taking it out of the aquifer. That'd be great.
You're sounding a little like Howard Seymour when he was talking about drinking the water that was being discharged from the wastewater treatment.
Yeah.
Darren Gordon said that you can.
I know, he demonstrated, he took a bottle and drank it.
I won't.
Yeah. At a, at a Board of Public Works meeting.
That's putting your money where your mouth is.
Howard Seymour.
I think it's putting your mouth, your mouth where you're, never mind. I think it's putting your mouth where you're, never mind.
Oh, boy. All right. Are we ready to talk about intergovernmental relationships?
Why not?
All right.
Why not?
So we've got maintaining strong relationships with the county, the coastal communities to address common challenges. Relationships with governmental agencies, including county and state, and showing our leadership and independent from county governance. So.
Well, we have a new opportunity here in the fact that IG Burton has been replaced with Mark Schaefer, and I have met with him. He seems receptive to working with us. We we met before Christmas. And it was a very positive conversation. He did endorse the idea of a hundred-foot buffer zone, which was somewhat surprised me, but I was glad to hear that he.
Ted, you faded out. He did endorse the idea of what again?
Of the hundred-foot buffer. And I was pleased to hear that. So, you know, overall, I think we've got a lot of work to do. Mark is an unknown to us, and we're unknown to him as a group. And so I think we have a lot of work to do there. Obviously, there's a lot of opportunity there because not only is Mark new to County Council and Janelle can can corroborate this, but Cindy Green is also new. So you have, you know, two-thirds of the, or two-fifths of the County Council that are new. And the other two, John Riley and Doug Hudson, have not been there very long, about two years each. So you've got, the only real long-term memory you have there is Michael Vincent. So there's a great opportunity there for us to get to know and for them to get to know us and this community. John Riley has worked in this community in the past, and Doug Watson has been in the area for a long time, as has Mark, but I don't think Cynthia Green, I think she's pretty much Western Sussex, and I don't know, I don't have any knowledge of her having prior experience in Lewis. If anybody does, that'd be wonderful, but I don't. And so I think we have a great opportunity there to become known to County Council, the new County Council. The ACT Community Group, I think everybody's aware that that, the chairmanship of that rotates now on an annual basis. And last year, I had been the chair two years ago and had been for a couple of years, and then Gene Langen from Fenwick was the chair last year. He has now rotated to Stan Mills as a new mayor to be Chair of ACT. We had a meeting the other day, and ACT did has been working and meeting with, or been hearing from Bonnie Ram, who works for the University of Delaware regarding the offshore wind project. And that, that's a, that's a big project, while Orsted has gone away this year or last year. It's every belief that they will be back, or some other company will be back with offshore wind. And Bonnie Ram has been very much talking to the members of the ACT group about the idea that it's highly probable that this is going to become a reality, that the wind turbines will be built offshore. And unlike the Orsted proposal, which was kind of a top-down, here's what we're going to offer you, there's eighteen million dollars to improve Seashore National Park. The idea that she's proposed and has gotten some traction is that we that the, they asked, that we, the ACT group asked for a place at the table when the early discussions are happening so that there is more opportunities to get a long-term commitment financially out of whatever company might build offshore wind turbines to provide a revenue stream to support whatever is necessary. And I think that it's known that there's at least ten million dollars worth of dredging projects that need to be done. And so far, Denrick has been appropriating five million dollars a year. That leaves a pretty big shortfall on an annual basis. So there was a letter sent to the governor, the Gene Sign, is asking, saying that the communities wanted to be involved in any future negotiation. That's it. But Bonnie Ram has been very helpful in sort of shifting that. I think, I'm looking, any of you were at the the meeting that was held last year when the Orsted proposal came forth, and there was just community outrage about the Orsted proposal. And so I think this is an opportunity to perhaps turn that a bit. So that's where it's going, or where it has, where it is right now. Invite you to attend any of the meetings going forward. County Council, I think, will be attending some of them. Todd Lawson was actually there for the meeting. On, it was a Zoom meeting, so nothing, nobody was there, surely.
And Ted, do you have it all of them on the mailing list for the minutes and the agendas?
I beg your pardon? I didn't hear you.
Are you all on the mailing list for agendas and minutes?
I don't know. You were, I thought, Rob.
I'm thinking about the others.
Yeah, we can put everybody on there. Stan has made a commitment to redo the mailing. So, yeah, I could add everybody's name.
That'd be great.
Okay. But I do think there's an opportunity.
Hey, Ted. Go ahead. Go ahead. I was just gonna ask, I was not taking notes when you were talking. Bonnie Ram, I think you said her name was.
Yeah, already, yeah.
Who does she?
She works for the University of Delaware.
You do. And what capacity is she?
She's, she's a consultant on the environmental, the wind, the wind industry.
Okay, so she's, she actually works for.
She actually, she, her card has her as a consultant with the University of Delaware. I think she's a contract employee. She lives in Washington.
So she's, right, that's what it sounds like. Yeah, the one thing that I'm picking up on the, what Andrew spoke to when he was talking, we were talking about the the idea of of creating a incubator environment here and the idea of licensing or royalty fees being collected. If there's going to be generation of KWs offshore, it seems to me that that is, that's industry, and there's reason to believe that that's a taxable activity. And I don't know why we wouldn't, we should not benefit from that.
Yeah. Well, that was part of the problem with the Orsted situation because there was virtually none of it, and Delaware was late to sign the agreement. So Maryland signed that agreement. So basically, they got all the construction. So the construction of the wind turbines was going to be done over in, close to Baltimore, and then brought around, and the maintenance facility was going to be someplace in Maryland. And that was, and yet it was going to be in the view shed of mostly the Fenwick area and South Bethany area, and of course, Ocean City, and but there, and then, of course, the only thing that was going to happen was the the cable was going to make landfall in Seashore National, in Seashore Park. And that's why there was the eighteen million dollar commitment there to make improvements. So the question is, where, where will it go? And, you know, who will benefit and what opportunity? I mean, you know, we, you know, somebody said, well, why don't we have more maintenance facility operations, or why isn't Delaware really engaged in trying to attract a maintenance facility to be built here? Where would that be? You know, perhaps Indian River Inlet, you know, would be an opportunity. There's really none of, none of the Atlantic coastline in Delaware, the twenty-one miles of Atlantic coastline really has any commercial operation. You know, there's, there's nothing, but yet there is opportunity, perhaps, you know, further up the Delaware Bay. So I think there's an awful, the Orsted, there was an article in the New York Times last week, I don't know whether if you saw it, about the fact that the wind turbine, Gee, he has come out with now a new wind turbine for offshore that is thousand sixty-nine feet tall.
Wow.
But obviously, and it's being considered for production because obviously it would require fewer of them. And because the one that, the ones that they were proposing offshore here were in the eight hundred-plus feet. But the ones, I'll send that article out if you haven't read it. But it's, it's an interesting recognition that the size of the turbines has grown dramatically. So it's going to make the one we have over here in the marsh look like, you know, a pipsqueak.
Well, I'll tell you, we were out in, near Palm Springs last year. It was driving down from Joshua Tree to Palm Springs. And those, they had a wind farm out there, and I don't, I have no idea how big those turbines were, but they were gigantic. They were actually quite beautiful. They were, they were huge.
Yeah. When you fly into LA, when you fly into Palm Springs, you get the same idea because they're all over up there. But that's, it's going to be something to watch, but obviously, wind turbines, it's a clean energy. And I think most of you know that Orsted has made the original installation up off of Block Island and with three wind turbines. And I went up two years ago, three years ago now, to take a look at it. Quite interesting because there's a lot of discussion about the environmental impact of it, but there's also, then when you talk to some people, they also will tell you that there's been a positive because around the base of those wind turbines, new colonies of fish have managed to grow and establish. So, and there also is a tourism component of people who want to go out and see them. So there's a lot of pros and cons. It's, it's a very, very interesting opportunity there. The other thing that I think we want to watch, and Rob and I had a brief exchange the other day in an email about the fact that with the Senate moving to Democratic control, that it's very possible that Senator Carper will be in a, will be the Chair of the Environmental, the Public Works Commission, which will be, could be very good for Delaware. It could be very good for us.
Yep. Yes, indeed.
So.
Ted, do you know, I know that Senator Carper was trying to get the Corps to change its formula for calculating priorities for dredging to include recreational use and tourist value. Do you know if he got anywhere with that?
As I remember. As far as I know, he didn't.
Okay. Maybe, yeah. That's what I'm hoping for now.
Yeah. That would be quite a shift because as the Corps abandoned the Lewis-Rehoboth Canal for consideration twenty years ago. The last time the Corps dredged this was in the winter of two thousand and one, and it only dredged to the drawbridge. And it was, beg your pardon, Rob?
That helps.
Well, it didn't really because it was a very surgical dredge. They dredged one path in and what, they didn't dredge the basin at all. And evidence that when the Calamar Nickel came in the next summer, because you'll recall that when David Hyatt was the captain of the Calamar Nickel, he used to bring it into the town dock. And so he came in the next, the next spring with the, with the boat or the ship, and he got in front of the overfalls and he tacked towards the, our dock in eighteen twelve park and got stuck on a sandbar.
I'd forgotten that.
And so he had to wait for the tide to come in and lift the, the Calamar Nickel off the sandbar.
Oh, God.
The reenactment.
It is Mayberry.
I miss David. I still miss David Hyatt. He was really, he looked the part of the captain of a, of a bastard sailing ship. Anyway, I think there's lots of opportunity. I would, I know Andrew, I asked Andrew and Tim to be our liaisons to County Council to the extent possible. They're not meeting in person. I think that you could, if you could listen in to their meetings, would be helpful and, and, you know, getting the information back to us and also letting them know that we're there.
I know Mark Schaefer somewhat. I spoke to Mark a lot during the lead-up to the, to our, our election, and so I, I know, we know each other. Yeah.
Great. Good. Very good.
As you know, he's a Smyrna guy, so Matt, Matt, Matt DeSabatino made that introduction.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So he, he, you know, he did indicate that he, you know, is very interested in what our concerns are, so we should take advantage of that.
Good.
I think the other thing that we have an opportunity to, to strengthen our relationships with both the board and the county on is how we manage the Jones Farm.
He didn't particularly like that, though. Did you talk to him about how he feels now about it?
Yeah, he liked the idea of the purchase. He didn't like the price.
Okay. I don't think any of us loved the price.
Nobody loved the price. But anyway, but how we manage that going forward, I think, as a, as a cooperative venture is really important. The first.
Do I remember correctly, Ted, that we have a, we have a understanding that we're going to work with the county over a two-year period to develop a development plan for the Jones Farm? Is that right?
A management plan.
Management plan.
A management plan. I apologize.
Put the word development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going back to Janet's comment earlier, it's been suggested to me that we could charge as a city, because there's deer calling is allowed there.
In go.
And I've already been approached by two hunters who would love to rent stands and hunt with bow and arrow.
So just so you know, wow, that's bow and arrow. Okay, because Ted and I got, got very angry calls before we even owned the land from neighbors who, I guess, there were people shotgun hunting. And I guess told the neighbors that the city told them it was okay.
They had a permit from the city.
It was Tim.
It was Tom Spell.
It was Tom Spell. Were you, were you saying that, Tom?
Don't do that to me, Emery.
I, I only said it because I knew it wasn't true, if I had any doubt.
Thank you.
There is a big herd of deer out there, and they will have to be managed, but we do.
You put that under Janet's purview. She can award, she can award the hunting permits every year.
He did a great job on that boat lottery.
I do not want that. I have a herd of deer behind my house, which are near and dear to my heart, so I'm not going to do anything with that.
Okay. Well, they, they, they do, as the farmer who managed, who ran, who farmed that area for a long time, he said, you know, when we were talking about the site for the BPW water tower, and I told him where it was and that they needed to get in there to survey it. And he, and there was concern about, well, that they disturbed the soybean crop. His answer was, the deer eat all the soybeans. I had to plant them twice, and I don't expect to harvest much out of that area, so go ahead and do it. So there's plenty of them out there.
All right.
All right. So I think obviously, there's a lot, the endless opportunities here. We're very fortunate to have Chris Coombs and Senator Carper and Lisa Blunt Rochester, all of whom know Lewis, come to Lewis, like coming here. And, you know, to the extent possible, communicating with them is, we should do it regularly. So. All right.
All right. So the, the next one is preparing for future economic and demographic conditions. You know, one, one of those is positioning the workforce numbers to meet the demands of our future citizenry and then economic planning strategy based on climate issues and population demographics. Some of that, I think, comes back to the, the idea that Andrew and Tim brought up earlier about, you know, how we kind of diversify the economy and build on our destination status without the need to be near an airport or major highway. You know, one, one is a workforce thing, which there were a number of things about the workforce brought up in the in the short-term priorities. I, you know, I guess what, what I would say In in the short term priorities that, you know, I I guess what what I would say is. I I try to be conservative on the idea of of adding staff and very strategic about when and how and where we add staff, but. You know, i- if a lot of the second homes become primary residences, if, you know, we end up with more people. In Lewis year round that that could, you know, drive some some changes to to what the the workforce looks like. So thoughts on on those?
The, it would be interesting, Emery, if you could track the growth of our workforce over the last five years. My sense is certainly over the time I've been on the council that it's grown considerably.
It has.
And I think we need to make sure that it is, as you say, strategic.
Yep.
I'd also want to put into that, if if you're going to track it, if there are any specific things that caused that growth.
Right, right.
The one thing was, of course, that we in-sourced recycling, which which.
That's what I meant, that was exactly my point, Rob.
Okay.
Well, and and you know, some of it, when you look at. The the Maintenance Department, we took on additional restrooms. The trail responsibility, so so some of those really did correlate with kind of being handed responsibility.
And some of them are just the result of growth, I mean, we, you know, when we we didn't have an HR department. And we still don't really have one, although we have someone identified now. And and we did before, but it was just not fair for Ellen Lorraine to try to do HR stuff. You know, and and do all the other responsibilities she had, thank you very much, Ellen Lorraine.
And and with the the four months of hindsight, I I think I can say with confidence, that was. A very good decision, both in in adding that function and and the the person specifically. Because there there are a number of of things that were not being done. And not being properly tracked that now are, that I think.
Yes.
So, but but I I definitely understand Rob's concern, we need to.
Sure.
Be careful that we don't just add a staff every time somebody thinks we, you know.
Yeah, I I just point out that, you know, council approves every staff member addition.
Right.
So, you know, if there are, you know, maybe there should be sort of standard things that are presented when there's when we're talking about a staff expansion. So that we can, you know, as as Rob says, so we can be strategic about it and said, all right, well, we, when we added a position before, these were the concerns we had. And now here are the same concerns, it just sees more, you know, whatever the metrics may be or the considerations may be. Just just so we, you know, we do, we do track it, but but, yeah, I mean, I can't think of a position that we've added. That I thought was unnecessary or that has proven to be unnecessary. So, yeah, I agree, I agree, there has been an increase in the number of of employees, but. We have a different population now, I mean, ten years ago, there weren't the same demands on municipal government for services and responsiveness that there are now.
Well, and and, you know, again, when you think about it, it, you know, some additions aren't aren't permanent. We, if you recall, did hire a planner. When that didn't work out and the staff person left, we evaluated, you know, well, and and then Tom left as well. We we ended up evaluating and saying, okay, can we can we get by without this? And and I think, you know, at this point, and and at that point, you'll recall, just the volume of of development applications was. Kind of insane. But we did also look at that as a succession planning and and knew that it would not be a forever thing. And I think that's similar to how we're looking at the addition in the the Building Department. Is that, you know, we're we're gonna, we're gonna reach the the top of the mountain and then. When the next vacancy comes up, we may keep the staff where it is, so. So again, but. Your point is definitely taken. And then the next one is budget finance economy, the stability, fiscal planning and stability of budget and diversifying economy. And again, I think that that we covered that when we talked about it under long term.
And by the way, we do have a Finance Committee meeting coming up this week, we put the agenda out, but if if. You know, if there are things that you think maybe we could should sneak in there to discuss, have a look at the agenda and and give us your thoughts on that, it's on Thursday. And Tim, Tim from UBS will be there to present for the committee as well, because they might want to tune in.
Thank you. A very positive report from Tim, I would expect. Get with the current status of the stock market. Maybe by Thursday it won't be that way.
But we've got, remember, we're very, very, I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak, Andrew, you're the chair.
You're right, we're fiscally conservatives.
Yeah, I mean, we're, the stock market is such, take a look at the bond market if you want to see how we're doing.
Yeah.
And just a reminder to everybody, the goal has always been three percent, so increase, so you have to.
Unfortunately, there's no Tesla stocks in there, you know. They say that's going to go, they say that's going to go from eight hundred to twenty four hundred in the next couple of years.
Tesla's insane, that that stock is absolutely insane, it's insane.
There, the the thing with Tesla is their CEO worries me. And if he does something crazy, the stock could.
We may get on one of his, one of his rockets and head out to outer space.
So, all right, so now we have the list of other, so we've got. Creating a long term vision for the city twenty five to fifty years out. If you recall, we did have money in this budget to do. A strategic plan and we did not do that. Initially, we put it on the back burner because of of COVID and the uncertainty of revenues. And ultimately, we used the funds that we had allocated for that for our cybersecurity. So that is something now, I. Have sent something to you all before, but I I think that it might be worth looking at. One of the the surveys that the National Community Survey that that has done. That then you can benchmark yourself against other communities. And and that might be a good starting point for a strategic plan, but we obviously can talk about that in the budget. Any any other twenty five to fifty years out thoughts?
I think that's really quite important, Emery. And I think we might even ask the Planning Commission to give a. A meeting and some first thoughts. Because we know that twenty five to fifty years out is when sea level rise is going to start hitting according to the best models. And our city will change. So I think we'll be doing a favor to the next generation if we start thinking about what that will mean for us.
Okay.
Good thinking.
GIS implementation throughout the city, and I know this is very bureaucratic, but. To to myself and Janelle, I know it's music to our ears and it really because it's a tool. And, you know, for instance, Rob, we've talked about, you know, some of the the property related documents. If we could, you know, as we start to digitize those, if we could put them in some sort of a geographic database, then. Then I think it's easier to find them when you're saying, you know, let me see all the leases that are on Bay Avenue. It's, you know, you can very easily find them and select them, so I know it's not. An exciting thing from a public standpoint, but I think that it it tends to be an important tool. I I actually, Janelle doesn't know this yet, but I volunteered her this morning at the Downtown Parking Committee meeting to possibly develop an application. In GIS that would be interactive, that would help people find our public parking lots and whether, you know. If they're fee lots or free lots, so, you know, there's just a lot of.
You can steal?
Pardon?
Does Mike have something you can steal?
Unfortunately, he doesn't, but it it's really, I mean, I think that there are enough tools out there that other places have developed that. Janelle might be able to do it in her sleep, I mean.
Emery, could this possibly tie in, maybe it doesn't, to trying to resurvey the city boundaries in a way that's more useful?
Um, I think it probably could and and we probably would want to include Glenn because of the the legal aspects of it. But also Miriam Familio at the state who manages the municipal boundary survey for the state. So I think so.
Great.
So, and some of this might be stuff, you know, I know we keep Janelle's plate pretty full, but it's also something that. You know, Tom really got us started on GIS and he's got a good background, so we could do possibly some of that under Tom's contract.
We also ought to look and see what, you know, assuming we we move forward with BPW, what do they have that we could piggyback on to or that would be?
We share stuff with them all the time. Or do do we still, we did when Tom was here, like when we needed stuff, they'd share it with us.
Does that still work, Janelle? Okay, good.
What kind of sharing, what what is being shared?
Um, for instance, they have mapped their water lines, their stormwater collection system. Their sewer lines. So we can, we can have access to that data as we need it.
And you don't have to ask permission to access it, you just have it under a license or some kind of a handshake kind of agreement?
So Janelle's got that thing, just so you know, you have that really slow sound in your voice. That she's got to unplug her, no, Janelle, she was getting ready to answer that, but she she has this thing where she sounds like a robot.
Better?
Better.
That's better.
So do do you want to talk about how that works, Janelle?
So typically, you know, if I need something from the the county or from from BPW, I'll just ask them and we have like a reciprocal. Agreement that, you know, we just, we can share data. And we've even talked about, you know, the five G information of like, you know, use if it's going on utility poles, you know, how do we, how do we track items? They've got data and then I've got data and how do we do we merge some of that data together to provide the best information?
Okay, but do I, do I understand correctly that they have actually mapped their their network of their distribution network of the utilities that they provide?
Yes.
And you have access to that?
If I need it, yes.
Okay, have you had a need for that yet?
Not at the moment, no.
Huh, okay. I'd like to see a copy of that, actually, if that, is that available electronically or is that, can you print it?
Well, it depends on what you want to see and what kind of information we're looking for, because it's all electronic. And it's how it's projected on a map, so it depends on what you want to see. And that would just be, so I I'd need, I'd need a defined parameter of what you're looking for.
Sure, you know what, we'll have a, we'll have a conversation after this, okay, about that. Thank you.
All right, anything else on GIS? I guess the next one, kind of. Maybe a companion, adapt technology and innovation to deliver efficient services. I'm I'm not sure who who put this out there, but I mean, there are more and more things that people can do. From their computer rather than having to come into City Hall, we do take payments over the computer, for example. You know, but there's just an ever increasing. Number of things that that we can do to make things easier for the public to access information, so I don't know, are there any other? Any specific comments on this one?
One of the things that you want to look at is what are the costs of those efficiencies? What, you know, how much are we paying in bank fees for some of these online payments? It it's a significant number for some businesses as we shift from, and Ellen Lorraine shaking her head, yes. But as we shift from people bringing a check or cash or whatever they used to bring and putting it on credit cards. You know, how much of, and should we reflect that in adjusting some of the fees that we charge? And or do we just absorb that? Because in many cases, these are now, I don't know that it's true for the city, but in many businesses, it's amounting to tens of thousands of dollars in fees that are being paid to the bank.
Oh, it is.
Well, that may be, but but, you know, we, we decided it was worth it for the city to have to eat service fees. So that people would have the convenience of parking, I I mean, I.
I just said we need, well, the parking thing's been working out because we're collecting that fifty cents extra.
Right, we have a fifty cent convenience fee, convenience fee, not just park mobile.
But I I I think this is a service that we that that we provide as a municipality to our workers, to our citizens. I I don't, you know, if if you want, if you want all these people to have to traipse down to City Hall and you want City Hall, not you, but and, you know, the council. And want, you know, want the the council to have to deal with, there goes another ambulance, the council to have to deal with. With a bunch of checks floating around, we can do that, but I think this is just as much a convenience for staff as it is for the citizens, so.
Right.
We ought to, we ought to know what the, we ought to know what the number is, Bonnie, I'm not saying we have to do anything.
Well, what I'm saying is, I, I, yeah, you have to know what the number is, but then you have to figure out what what the savings are that go with the fact that. It's not just a a dollar thing, there's a lot to it.
I agree, it's both sides.
So the the county does charge a credit card, a a service fee or convenience fee, whatever, for using a credit card. I know the law specifies what you can call it, but if you do recall, if you use a credit card on our meters, we have a fifty cent. Fee and and honestly, some people carry quarters just so they don't have to pay the fee, there you go. I I I've talked to a lot of people who will not pay that and that's, you know, it's a choice, but it is a convenience for not having to to carry quarters, so.
A former member of council who made that statement in a public meeting.
Yep. So, but we can, yeah, I mean, we we track the credit card fees and I know Ellen Lorraine has been. Very good about trying to make sure that the way we process credit cards is the most economical. So that's always the case. Anything else on technology to make our service delivery more efficient? All right.
Actually, I do have, Emery, I do have a real quick question. As far as technology, there, we have discussed the possibility of moving our in-house in-person meetings to the Rollins Center. With the idea that we would also at the same time. Continue to zoom them or put them on some kind of electronic platform. And I know you at one time said that there was a problem with the internet service, the fiber service or some some component.
That's all, so the the. Problem and it's, it wasn't really a problem, it was an unknown, is that. The internet is on LHS's Comcast internet account. And they needed their IT person to look at whether. Our streaming meetings from there would interfere with their bandwidth. And whether it would, you know, create problems for their work and they looked at it and they said it does not.
So there will be no need for us to incur costs associated with.
No.
pulling the fiber over to.
So right now we work on the wireless, so we're wirelessly connected. Um, so I think the main thing that we will have to do is have um our IT person work with their IT person and and actually put in a network drop so that there's, so that it's hardwired to the network.
Okay.
And that will pick up the quality of service quite a bit. Right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, next one's annexation. You know, again, I'm not sure that this really needs discussion. I think it's just one of those things that we know needs to continue to um be a priority. Contract management. Rob, again, this was anonymous, but you and I have talked about this, so I know even if you didn't put it on your questionnaire, I know it's near and dear to your heart, so did you want to mention, talk about that at all?
Sure, I I uh did put it on, actually. The, my idea is that we don't know what we, what the city's obligations are. We don't know what licenses we've got, what leases we've got. I mean, I was surprised to find that we leased the Great Marsh for hunting to Representative Collins. Uh, it it suddenly uh appeared somewhere, but lots of other contracts, all of our contracts, we just don't know what they are, at least the council doesn't. So, um, rather, and I looked at various contract management systems and they're all much more sophisticated than we need. So I drafted a little Excel spreadsheet and Anne Marie and Ellen Lorraine are going to look at it after the budget, um, after they get through the budget cycle and see whether that's something, you know, whether it's more than we need, less than we need. It would have things like uh who the other party and or parties uh is or are, uh, what the expiration is, any particular obligations we've got, that sort of thing. And we would uh add something to it whenever we entered into an agreement. Uh, kind of related, we don't have one with our solicitor and I'm hoping that we do. Arrange one for that service.
Uh, and also, uh, what's the rela- what's the relationship with GMB?
With who again?
With GMB. Is that formalized?
Good.
Yeah, that, because that's been in place for
Long time.
Close to 30 years.
Yep.
Bravo. One of the things that we have on, again, on the finance committee's agenda is to look at, we we talked about an inventory management system is probably something in need as well. Um, would it be okay if we shared this with that committee and let them have a look and see if it things that we should also consider as part of a contract management system as well that we might be missing?
Absolutely, you've got a committee to deal with that, Andrew.
Well, it's just something I figure we would discuss potentially with the finance committees, like what's the value of an inventory management system and are there good ones out there that we could, you know, per, et cetera, that kind of thing?
Great, I'll email it to you.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Okay.
You know, I'm gonna ask that we hit the brakes for a second and I want you to back up and the subject matter of annexation, can we take a minute to just talk about that or I'd like to ta- talk about it?
Sure.
I would like to us, for us to have a uh an examination and a honest conversation about not only what the costs are for annexation, but what value we are actually deriving by having a or encouraging annexation. Um, and I I don't expect to get into this discussion right now during this meeting, but it is a subject matter that I think that we need to uh explore.
I I agree with Tim, I think that's a good thing and I would suggest that it be a public workshop.
Yep.
I I
Okay.
Of us, I I think, you know, if there, you know, there are people who are, who think annexation is in the long-term interests of the city and people who don't, so let's find
Okay.
a station about it.
All right, and and would it be, is it beneficial for us to have a conversation prior to a workshop or just have that conversation at the workshop?
I think you need the public input.
Oh, I understand you need the input before you would change anything, but I'm just suggesting.
Like a discussion, how to frame a discussion document or something that we can use when we have a public workshop?
We're gonna have the opportunity because we're gonna appoint an annexation committee Monday night.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, you know, we we need someone to to facilitate it, uh, whether that's one of us or or staff or somebody else, that's fine and and have a, but but it needs, I mean, it can't be a forum where everybody gets up and, you know, screams and yells about development because that's not the point.
Exactly.
No, it's not.
So, I I mean, I do think it needs to be organized in a tight enough fashion so that it's productive.
Right.
If that's what you're talking about getting together, absolutely, because otherwise it it won't, it it won't help any, it won't, it won't move the ball down the road. And and it's just the public's understanding of why the city has has made annexation a priority for 30 years um or 20 years, sorry, there's a cat who just came to join me, um, you know, or or and and, you know, how it, how the annexation process works under the charter, um, and, you know, that frankly, the the person who I think understands that the best is Dennis Rudin. So I'd suggest that he be invited because he spent a lot of time looking at the mechanics, not the, not the yes or no, but the mechanics under the charter. Um, so, you know, I I think that would all be good. I I could, I can have to feed this cat or it's going to make me crazy. I'll be right back.
Hey.
All right.
Yeah, just to, we are going to appoint an annexation committee Monday night to deal with the request to annex the property right there at the crossing on Savannah Road. Uh, where uh the uh resale shop used to be across the street from the former car dealership.
And that, but then annexation committee is made up of council people, is it not?
Yeah.
All four of you, all four of you.
Right.
And it's specifically to review that annexation.
It's just that annexation, but it'll give you some opportunity to look at the, individually, look at the uh, the parameters of annexation.
Right.
In relationship to a specific property.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I think the, I think one of the things that's going to be very critical to that is the list that I, that we're waiting for from BPW. Where have they extended services and, you know, and where have they not?
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Well, um, again, parking issues shows up as as long-term, but I think we've discussed that. Um, review of citywide signage, clutter and overload. And I don't know if that is referring to traffic signs, which if if it is, that would be hopefully addressed through the wayfinding work. Um, but if it's commercial signage, that's a different issue. So I don't, I'm not.
Oh, the sign ordinance is at least uh 18 years old now. And as far as I know, it has not been updated.
It it hasn't, and an update of the the sign regulations will be a a major undertaking because of the Gilbert um Reed versus Town of Gilbert um Supreme Court decision. Um, it it, it, so.
I can tell you that that original sign ordinance was worked on by Richard Johnson, Kate Carney and myself and Betsy Allwood. Um, Richard and Betsy are no longer around, but Kate still is, but that's, it's that old.
So it 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 truly may be worth um it it may be worth looking at having a consultant work with us on a sign code update because
Yep.
the um, again, Reed versus Gilbert is a game changer. And my guess is there are consultants that have done quite a few updates that could make sure that you know, that have addressed some of the intricacies.
Yeah, Anne Marie, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with Reed versus Gilbert, what's, what's the?
So Reed versus Gilbert is in um Gilbert, Arizona, this is kind of where it started. In Gilbert, Arizona, there was a a church and they would put out their temporary signs saying, you know, church service Sunday or whatever, and um I guess they were not able to to put out their signs, it was a zoning violation. And the, they were sued, the town of Gilbert was sued. And the the long and the short of the Supreme Court decision is that um any regulation of signage based upon content is not legal. Which means if you have it, you know, like it, so it comes down even as simple as a lot of sign ordinances will say in residential zones, you can have for sale signs for houses that are for sale. Well, now you're regulating content. So it comes, so there are a lot of like nuances and intricacies of how you deal with that um that I think o- other people have explored, but it it um creates a real challenge.
Yeah.
So so that's why I think it's probably something that that would be worth hiring somebody who's been through it.
So you can have a sign, I mean, you can say all signs will be three feet tall and five feet long.
On a residential property, you can have a sign that's, that's two feet by three feet.
Right, you just can't, you just can't regulate what it says.
Right, so your sign on on your, your residential property could say for sale. It could say the city manager is an asshole. I mean, you know, it could say, there's a whole lot it could say.
Oh, even profane messages are okay.
Um.
Profanity you can regulate.
I think there's public decency issues there.
Okay, so you could say a bad person, but whatever.
I was gonna go make one right now.
Well, I mean, because there, actually, because that did come up, because there was a a sign before the presidential campaign in town, I think off of Cape Henlopen Drive, that had the S H I T word on it.
It was the, it was the Trump flag that said no more BS.
Right.
And I I mean, I don't know if anybody else did, but I had people call me and say they were offended by it.
Yeah.
Because it was right there where, you know, kids were going, pe- people would be driving to Cape Henlopen State Park with their children and.
Right.
Well, I think the idea of of working on the sign ordinance is is a good one, but I think there's also an issue right now. We have a lot of signage that is uh so old that it's almost illegible.
Yeah.
Um, I can tell you there's several signs uh on Savan- on King's Highway that you can't even read them, the.
So you're talking road signage there, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Here in this, Rick.
I'll offer up the example of
Rick's gone.
the beach at at the, uh, pardon?
Uh, Rick's gone.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I was gonna offer the, the examples of the signs over on the be- beach access points uh at the end of the East State Street along Bay, many of those are bleached out by the sun and are illegible. But
Okay.
There's, yeah, it's it's not.
So what I'm writing down is sign code update, old, illegible, washed out. Um, you know, throughout town, um, and then the other thing is the whole wayfinding issue. So the, are those the three things?
Yep.
Anne Marie, can you refresh my memory? We were gonna have another workshop or was the guy gonna come back with a more bespoke kind of set of signage that we were?
He, we're gonna have another workshop and um hoping to talk about um, also if we want to move forward initially with just the parking-related signage, talk about, you know, costs and and.
So he he'll be prepared to present that as an option of
Yes.
if you just went with this, this is what it would include and, okay, great.
At this point. Uh, right, so at this point, I have put the date of January 28th out to him.
Okay.
Um, and have not heard back, but in fairness, I just did that this morning.
Okay. And that's for wayfaring.
Wayfinding, yep.
Because we're gonna need to know those numbers in order to talk about it during the budget stuff. The budget cycle.
All right. So that's the end of the list.
Yeah, and we finished it an hour before the BB thing.
Yeah.
Is there anything?
I apologize for my PG rated thing, that just, I was thinking and it flew out.
We're all adults here.
And and when we put it on YouTube, we always say not for kids. You have to, it says, is this made for kids? Yes, it's made for kids. Well, I wouldn't say it's made for kids, usually we you know, don't try to make it not for kids, but.
All right, is there anything else to bring up at this point?
Actually, that's a good point. So my son Bodhi's asked me, what's the youngest can, if he wanted to ever make a public statement, can he, is there, is there any limitation to that? He can come on as a, at any age and?
I don't see why he couldn't.
I don't see why he wouldn't.
Absolutely.
I love it when kids get civically engaged.
Yeah.
Well, actually, there are a lot, there are a lot of city councils that have youth, youth uh county, youth members.
That's wonderful.
He didn't have anything specific, he just wants to know if he can.
Well, he is welcome to make a statement. What, you know, so one of the things when I was in Dover that we did and I'm gonna look at Janet for a minute because it was under our um Parks and Rec Department, is we did a Youth and Government Day. And we worked with the the area high schools, which here we have one, but we could include SAS too. Um, to um, you know, in invite students to come in and and they would hear from the different departments about what they do and then they would hold a mock council meeting and it it was always a lot of fun, I thought. So i- if there's interest in doing that on the part of, you know, the social studies folks at at um Cape um, and i- if Janet would be interested, I I would gladly participate because I love that stuff.
It's great, I think we'd better wait till COVID gets a little more controlled.
Yeah, we'll wait till we can actually bring people together, but um, you know, it Matt Lindell, I don't know if anybody knows him, he's a social studies teacher at the high school and I know he he had mentioned it to me when I first started here, because he was, he's on the Dover City Council and he he knew that we did that there and he and I just never connected to make it happen.
Well, the state has a principal for a day thing, which I've done in the past, uh, which is also interesting. I would imagine each of you as council members have been asked or invited or will be asked or invited to do a similar kind of thing. It's worth doing.
Well, just on the COVID issue that was Ted just brought up and as sort of a reminder to everyone to tune into the BB meeting at 4:30, the uh I just got a big blip on my iPhone that the, the uh uh COVID, the National COVID Task Force has had now announced that there is a new USA strain of COVID that is rapidly uh spreading around this country.
Saw that.
It's in addition to the UK variant that is rapidly spreading. So um, you know, now you'd, now, I mean, it kind of puts a little context to why it is that it's been being reported that uh Biden is looking at giving everyone, as many people possible, uh, the first dose and not holding back for the booster. Um, because it's uh, it's, it's on fire.
It's probably a Capitol Hill variant of the of the virus by now, too.
Yeah, now, uh, why it is, I don't understand that, you know, I'm.
Good point, Rob.
What did, what did, I missed that.
Hill variant of the virus.
I don't, I don't know, I don't exactly understand why it is that uh Carney apparently is lifting restrictions in the face of this, but.
I saw that.
Uh, you know, maybe all that will be explained, I don't, I don't get that, um, but you know, I I think Carney's been reasonably careful, so I don't know what that's all about, but anyway, everybody should should tune in to the the BB discussion, 4:30, I know the public has a lot of questions.
Yep, and I think uh, I think it'll be very well
attended.
Just to follow up on that, uh, the the information I sent out yesterday about uh working with the state to try to identify a lot. try to identify a local site, we have not heard back yet. I imagine it'll take time. But there is a group that's trying to get that organized.
By the way, Anne Marie, thank you for your efforts to try to get our citizens as much information as they can get. Because I think people are just worried about, how do I even find out where I go and where?
Right.
Well, and the discussion with the, the Lewis Board of Health part was, it was confusing because, you know, there seemed to be a sort of a BB network physicians and their patients and everybody else. And it was, it was very, it was, it was unsettling. To hear that there was this, and I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not blaming BB, they can only do what they can do, but
But yeah, the rest will have to work directly with the DPH.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was, it was disturbing that, it also was disturbing that all of this still is kind of on the fly. So, um, so I'm hoping that there will be more clarity with the discussion with
I think it is on the fly nationwide right now.
Well, you know, that, but that's, I, I'm sorry, I don't find that acceptable.
I don't find it acceptable either, Bonnie. I'm just saying.
For, we've known for months and months that this was coming and now it just appears to be a little ad hoc, but you know, maybe not, maybe not. I hope not.
Military take it over.
What did you say?
I was just saying they should just let the military take it over. They know how to run supply chain.
Well, the, I mean, and that's, I thought that the military was dealing with the distribution to the states, aren't they?
Yes.
You got the whole, they should do the whole supply chain.
The whole thing, right.
Well, I, to anybody who's old enough to have read Catch 22, having the military handle it is not all that inspiring. So I don't know, I don't know. I think that this is a civilian issue, but
I think he was in the air force though.
We'll assign it to the new space corps.
I, I think, I think the, the, the idea of having the military handle it is mainly because the, the logistics, they're, they're one of the only organizations in the country that has the logistics down.
On a scale, right, yeah.
Unless you want to have Amazon do it, because clearly
There you go.
They could get you your, your delivery within a day.
That's a great idea.
It may not be cold, but it'll be there.
When we did, when we did the whole ramp up at TSA and they brought in some FedEx executive to run it.
That's a good one.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, we'll see you on Monday. Have a good weekend.
Yeah. You as well, Anne Marie. Take care.
Thank you. Have a good weekend, guys.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.